Clerks are making copies of Bill 19 as passed and the engrossed version. And so I guess we can proceed to the voting file. We do have copies of Bill 87 that was made and passed out, the engrossed version. So whatever you believe we can go to on the voting file, the third reading file voter is also on our desk.
Thank you, Senator. So we are in the voting file. I will ask the clerk to read the title of the first bill, Bill number 48-32ls.
Bill number 48-32ls, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform, and amended on the floor. Introduced by R.J. Risfisio, T.C. Ada, B.J.F. Cruz, Aline Yamashita, Ph.D. An Act Relative to Defining the Educational and Professional Requirements for Licensed Professional Counselors, Licensed Mental Health Counselors, and Marriage and Family Therapists. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Yes.
Senator Risfisio, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 48-32ls received 15 yea votes. Bill number 48-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 86-32cor.
Bill number 86-32cor, as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation, introduced by T.C. Ada. An Act to Add a New Section 10238 to Article 2, Chapter 10 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Authorizing the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Court Authority of Guam Port to waive sovereign immunity to satisfy a prerequisite for approval of a $10 million commercial loan. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinen, nay.
Bill number 86-32 received 12 yea votes, three nays. Bill number 86-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 89-32cor.
Bill number 89-32cor, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Michael F.Q. Sinicalis, Vicente B. Pangolinen, T.C. Ada, T.R. Munya Barnes, R.J. Risfisio, Aline A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An Act to Add a New Article 17 to Chapter 22, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Creating the Responsible Receivables Fund. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Aye.
Senator Yamashita, nay.
Amended Bill number 89-32 received 13 yea votes and two nay votes. Amended Bill number 89-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 84-32cor.
Bill number 84-32cor, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and Further Amended on the Floor. Introduced by Vicente B. Pangolinen, T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D. An Act to Add a New Subsection F to Section 2, Part 3, Chapter 2 of Public Law 31-233, Relative to Making an Appropriation to the Guam Community College for its Apprenticeship Program. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 84-32 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 84-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 92-32cor.
Bill number 92-32cor, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Michael T. Limteaco, T.R. Munya Barnes, Vicente B. Pangolinen, Frank B. Uggan, Jr. An Act to Add a New Subitem 1 to Section 61103Q of Article 1, and to amend Sections 61305A, 61306A, and 61307B6 of Article 3, all of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Sections 30101 and 30102A of Chapter 30, Division 2 of Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Allowing for Bed and Breakfasts in R1, R2, and Commercial Zones. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Amended Bill number 92-32 received 15 yea votes. Amended Bill number 92-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 109-32cor.
Bill number 109-32cor, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and Further Amended on the Floor. Introduced by Michael F.Q. Sinicalis, B.J.F. Cruz, Vicente B. Pangolinen, Aline A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Frank B. Uggan, Jr. An Act to Amend Section 26205 of Article 2, Chapter 26 of Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Increasing the Statute of Limitations on the Collection of Unpaid Business Privilege Taxes to 10 Years. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, pass. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye.
Amended Bill number 109-32 received 14 yea votes, one nay. Amended Bill number 109-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 114-32.
Bill number 114-32cor, as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, and amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Frank B. Uggan, Jr., R.J. Risfisio. An Act to Amend Subsection 2AG of Section 2 of Chapter 1, and to Add a New Section 17 to Chapter X, both of Public Law 31-233, General Appropriations Act of 2013, Relative to Making an Appropriation from the Tourist Attraction Fund, T.A.F., to the Guam Visitors' Bureau, GBB, for the Hurau Academy, Inc., to continue its mission in promoting and perpetuating the Tramural Language and Culture. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Substitute Bill number 114-32 received 15 yea votes. Substitute Bill number 114-32 is duly passed by this body.
Bill number 115.
Bill number 115-32cor.
Bill number 115-32cor, as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Hagatna Restoration and Development Authority, and amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Frank B. Uggan, Jr., R.J. Risfisio. An Act to Amend Subsection 2AG of Section 2 of Chapter 1, and to Add a New Section 18 to Chapter X, both of Public Law 31-233, General Appropriations Act of 2013, Relative to Making an Appropriation from the Tourist Attraction Fund, T.A.F., to the Guam Visitors' Bureau, GBB, for the Anetnan Gepagu Cultural Arts Program, Inc. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Substitute Bill number 115-32 received 15 yea votes. Substitute Bill number 115-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 113-32cor.
Bill number 113-32cor, as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, and amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, Frank B. Uggan, Jr., B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., R.J. Risfisio. An Act to Amend Subsection 2AG of Section 2 of Chapter 1, and to Add a New Section 16 to Chapter X, both of Public Law 31-233, General Appropriations Act of 2013, Relative to Making an Appropriation from the Tourist Attraction Fund, T.A.F., to the Guam Visitors' Bureau, GBB, for Diktukus, Inc., to cover production costs for a cultural children's television program. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Substitute Bill number 113-32 received 15 yea votes. Substitute Bill number 113-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 117-32. Bill number 117-32, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan, Jr., R.J. Risfisio, T.C. Ada, Aline A. Yamashita, Ph.D., V. Anthony Ada, Dennis G. Rodriguez, Jr., B.J.F. Cruz, T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D. An Act to Add a New Section 79601.2 to Article 6 of Chapter 79, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Establishment of a War on Terror Fallen Heroes Monument to Honor Guam's Men and Women Who Have Courageously and Selflessly Served Our Island People and Our Nation in the War on Terror and Who Have Made the Ultimate Sacrifice.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfisio.
Senator Risfisio, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, aye.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Substitute Bill number 114-32 received 15 yea votes. Substitute Bill number 114-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 117-32. Bill number 117-32, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Michael T. Limteaco, T.R. Munya Barnes, Vicente B. Pangolinen, Frank B. Uggan, Jr. An Act to Amend Sections 3705 and 3707 of Article 7, Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Expanding the Duties of the Guam Police Department Community Assisted Policing Effort, CAPE, Volunteers to Include Enforcement of the Handbilling Act and for Other Purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Amended Bill Number 117-32 received 14 ye votes, 1 nay. Amended Bill Number 117-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 119-32 COR.
Bill Number 119-32 COR as substituted by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs and Judiciary and amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Chris M. Duñez, Brant T. McCready, Frank B. Uggins Jr. An act to amend the title of Chapter 37 and to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 37 of Title 9, Guam Code annotated, relative to home invasion.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Madam Speaker, before I give my vote, if we can just make a technical amendment on page 2. Line 4 on the strikeout felony and line 6 on the strikeout war.
To, I mean, these two are stricken right now? Yes, so, yes, so duly noted and that those will be removed when the gross copy then is sent to the governor.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Substitute Bill 119-32 received 15 ye votes. Substitute Bill Number 119-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 120-32 LS.
Bill Number 120-32 LS as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources and Election Reform and amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank B. Uggins Jr., R.J. Risfischel, TC Ada, Aline A. Yamashita Ph.D., V. Anthony Ada, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., B.J.F. Cruz, T.R. Munia Barnes, Judith T. Juan Pat EDD. An act to add a new section 79601.2 to Article 6 of Chapter 79, Title 21, Guam Code annotated, relative to the establishment of a War on Terror Fallen Heroes Monument to honor Guam's men and women who have courageously and selflessly served our island people and our nation in the War on Terror and who have made the ultimate sacrifice.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Substitute Bill Number 120-32 LS received 15 ye votes. Substitute Bill Number 120-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 123-32 LS.
Bill Number 123-32 LS as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Juan Pat EDD, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, R.J. Risfischel, C.M. Duñez. An act to appropriate the sum of $400,000 as sheeded to the General Fund pursuant to section 21116 of chapter 21, division 2, title 5, Guam Code annotated, to the Department of Revenue and Taxation for the purpose of funding the agency's transaction processing system.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye.
Do you have to do it three times?
Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Amended Bill Number 123-32 LS received 13 ye votes, 2 nays. Amended Bill Number 123-32 LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 127-32 LS.
Bill Number 127-32 LS as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Juan Pat EDD, T.R. Munia Barnes, R.J. Risfischel, Chris M. Duñez. An act to appropriate the sum of $100,000 as sheeded to the General Fund pursuant to section 21116 of chapter 21, division 2, title 5, Guam Code annotated, to the Department of Revenue and Taxation for the purpose of supporting the objectives of Public Law 31-135, also known as the Cash Economy Enforcement Act of 2011.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, pass. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Saniculus, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Amended Bill Number 127-32 received 13 ye votes, 2 nays. Amended Bill Number 127-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 106-32 COR.
Resolution Number 106-32 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, Judith T. Juan Pat EDD, R.J. Risfischel, Aline A. Yamashita Ph.D., B.J. F. Cruz, V. Anthony Ada, Michael F. Q. Saniculus. Relative to supporting the development of a public policy, investment and operational framework for establishing a sustainable and green cruise industry in Micronesia with Guam serving as the regional hub.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Amended Resolution Number 106-32 received 15 ye votes. Amended Resolution Number 106-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 135-32 COR.
Resolution Number 135-32 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris M. Duñez, V. Anthony Ada, Tommy Morrison, B.J.F. Cruz, Michael T. Limteaco, Brant T. McCready. Relative to requesting the introduction of legislation by Guam's delegate to Congress appropriating funds from the U.S. Treasury as an additional payment to the government of Guam for unreimbursed compact impact costs for the hosting of citizens of the freely associated state.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Amended Resolution Number 135-32 received 15 ye votes. Amended Resolution Number 135-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 138-32 COR.
Bill Number 138-32 COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Ben C. Pangolinan, T.R. Munia Barnes, Michael F. Q. Saniculus. An act to amend section 1515 I-2G of Article 5, Chapter 1 of Title 5, Guam Code annotated, relative to the construction, repair and improvements of the Guam Fishermen's Cooperative Association facility.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Amended Bill Number 138-32 received 15 ye votes. Amended Bill Number 138-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 107-32 LS.
Bill Number 107-32 LS as substituted by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Veterans Affairs, Homeland Security and Judiciary and amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant T. McCready, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, Michael F. Q. Saniculus, V. Anthony Ada, Michael T. Limteaco, R.J. Risfischel, Tommy Morrison, Aline A. Yamashita Ph.D., Frank B. Uggins Jr. An act to add a new section 80.50 to Article 2 of chapter 80, title 9, Guam Code annotated, relative to creating a three-strikes provision for habitual offenders of serious crimes.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Saniculus. Senator Saniculus, aye. Speaker Juan Pat. Speaker Juan Pat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Substitute Bill Number 107-32 received 15 ye votes. Substitute Bill Number 107-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 97-32 LS.
Bill Number 97-32 LS as amended by the author, further amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, Vicente Ben C. Pangolinan. An act to appropriate available funds from the Guam Territorial Highway Fund to designate and prioritize certain capital improvement projects by the Department of Public Works for flood mitigation and other purposes.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins. Senator Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Ungan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Madam Speaker, just an inquiry, point of inquiry. It says on line, on page three, line 12, it says flood mitigation projects prescribed in Exhibit A through R of this act, and I don't see any addendum to it. So is there an exhibit that's supposed to be attached to this particular provision?
Page, you're saying page three?
Yes, Madam Speaker, on page three, line 12, I believe.
12.
Yeah. It says prescribed in Exhibit A through R of this act, and I don't see any attachment at the moment. So I don't know if that was an oversight.
That's one where... Yeah, it, there's, yeah, you write from A through G.
A through G.
Yes.
There's, I believe there's an additional exhibit that should be attached, Madam Speaker, to this. If I'm not mistaken. It was part of the original bill when it was submitted, as amended, and it's part of the committee report.
Okay.
On this bill, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
But can we ensure, Madam Speaker, that as this is transmitted to the chief executive, that it be included as part of the exhibit attachment? Because that's what more or less we're voting on. Because it says of this act, it doesn't reference any particular document.
Okay, so...
Okay, just for purpose. Thank you very much.
Yes, clerks and legal counsel. Okay. All right, so the votes then for amended bill number 97-32 received 15 ye votes, amended bill number 97-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 118-32 COR.
Bill number 118-32 COR as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., BJF Cruz, V. Anthony Ada, Michael FQ Sinicalis, Judith T. Wampat EDD, RJ Risfischel, Brant T. McCready, Tommy Morrison, TR Munya Barnes. An act to add new sections 3123, 3124, 3124.1, and 3125 to Article 1, to amend section 3207 and add new sections 3212.1, 3230, 3231, and 3232 of Article 2, and to amend section 3613 of Article 6, all of Chapter 3, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, and to add a new subsection H to Section 2105, to new subsection C to Section 2107, and a new section 2111, all of Chapter 2, Title 3, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to alcohol beverage control and to be known as the Responsible Alcohol Sales and Service Act.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Ungan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Substitute bill number 118-32 received 15 ye votes. Substitute bill number 118-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 127-32 LS.
Resolution number 127-32 LS as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. Introduced by Vicente Bencii Pangolinan, BJF Cruz, TR Munya Barnes, Michael FQ Sinicalis relative to petitioning the United States Congress to amend the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 1990 to include all of New Mexico, Idaho, Arizona, Colorado, Nevada, Utah, Missouri, and Guam, and to improve and increase compensation for those affected by ionizing radiation.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Ungan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Substitute resolution number 127-32 received 15 ye votes. Substitute resolution number 127-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 132-32 LS.
Bill number 132-32 LS as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Aleen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., V. Anthony Ada, RJ Risfischel. An act to add a new subsection 10 and a new subsection 11 to section 80109S of Division 4, Chapter 80 of Title 10, Guam Code annotated relative to expanding the borrowing ability of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority by pledging compact impact funds as a repayment source for the additional available balance and to prohibit net pay by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischel.
Senator Ugin.
Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Ungan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number 132-32 received 14 ye votes, one nay. Bill number 132-32 LS is duly passed by this body.
Bill number 87-32 COR as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations and amended on the floor. Introduced by Tommy Morrison, Michael FQ Sinicalis, Chris M. Duennas, BJF Cruz, TR Munya Barnes, Brant T. McCready, Michael T. Lim Tiako, TC Ada, Frank V. Ugin Jr. An act to amend sections 3305 and 3305.1 and subsections I, K, and O of section 3101N to add new subsections 13 and 14 to section 3101F and a new section 3101P, all of Chapter 3 of Title 16, Guam Code annotated relative to amending the motorcycle operator's license, permit, and helmet laws.
Senator, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to remind you, a technical addition would say after "and..."
And tell which page?
Oh, the title, Madam Speaker.
Oh, the title, okay.
After "and" it should, "and" to implementing a limited helmet law.
"And," I'm sorry, can you say that again?
"And" to implementing a limited helmet law.
Implementing limited helmet law. Clerks, are you able to get that?
Okay.
Thank you, Senator. Yes. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, pass. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Ungan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass.
Substitute bill number 87-32 COR received 13 ye votes and two nays. Substitute bill number 87-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 19-32 COR, and Senators, I was instructed by legal counsel, if you please look on page 16 to correct your copy on section 8, just scratch that out because the Exhibit A will be attached. Page 16, section 8, that language should be deleted, 19. The one with the vendor, the vendor's receivables. No, but, but... What, no, no, Senator, what had happened was when it was, when an amendment was made, I took a recess, and Senator Munya Barnes had inquired about the exhibit, and I pulled out the attachment, and then, of course, a written amendment was referenced by Senator Pangolinan.
Madam Speaker, and the reason why I did that point of inquiry back then was because when I was looking at the amendment based on what was proffered, that amendment on the, the amendment as proffered by Senator Rodriguez was deleted, was already deleted, and that's why I had questioned and inquired about the situation, so...
Yes, and because of the discussion, and I had...
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of order.
Madam Speaker, the best way to resolve this is to ask the clerk to provide us a copy of the floor amendment that was offered, and we would see if there was an exhibit attached to that floor amendment. There's references to an exhibit on the act. There's no exhibit on bill number 19.
Madam Speaker, I think it's to refer to the amendment that I offered and the record of what was said on the floor at that time. So we can sit here, let's pull the tape and listen to exactly then that section of the, what was offered.
Well, if you look at section 7...
Point of order, Madam Speaker, and that's why when I objected to the amendment, I asked what, what exhibit, because there was no exhibit to my amendment, and it was being deleted.
Yes, but if you look at section 7, that's where it says referenced herein and shall be repealed upon the payment of the, of vendors of GMH, listed in Exhibit A appended herein.
But what is herein?
And that was the amendment that was...
Herein, here in bill 19. If we were discussing bill 20, and in the committee report in bill 20, there was an exhibit. If you're discussing bill 19, herein on 19.
Senator, like I said earlier... Senator, like I said earlier, what I did was that when Senator Munya Barnes had made the inquiry, I actually had held up the, the listing, and you're right, it was originally in Bill 20, and then because of that, then I said I was going to make a reset, go into recess so that then the Speaker Pangolinan could proffer the amendment making reference to that attachment, and hence, of course, the language in Section 7. But that's, but that was to attach, as it says, in Exhibit A, appended. So that means he's make, he's calling, no, but he was calling for the, for Exhibit A to be appended, to be attached. I'm sorry?
That, that exhibit can be fabricated and, and be attached to the bill, and there seems to be no checks and balances with, with how the bills are prepared and transmitted, and so there was nothing.
Senators, okay, wait. All of these discussions are taking place in the voting file, and there really aren't supposed to be any discussion at this time. So we have to continue voting, yes. So I would like the clerk to please read Bill Number 19-32 COR. Senators, we are voting, we are voting. Bill Number 19-32 COR, can the clerks please read the title?
Bill Number 19-32 COR is substituted by the author, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris M. Duñez, BJF Cruz, Tommy Morrison. An act to add new Sections 5201 to 5205 to Chapter 5, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated. Relative to gaming and add, to add a new Chapter 97 to Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the GMHA Healthcare Trust and Development Fund. And to add a new Section 80122 to Chapter 80, Division 4, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing an urgent healthcare center and for all other purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator San Nicholas.
Yes.
Senator San Nicholas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye.
Amended Bill Number 19-32 COR received 15 ye votes. Amended Bill Number 19-32 is duly passed by this body. On the nomination of Joseph S. Wesley to serve as a member of the Guam parole board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Senator, okay, thank you. Joseph S. Wesley received unanimous support, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of John T. Palomo to serve as a member of the Guam parole board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. John T. Palomo received unanimous support, and he is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ms. Maria Flor Herrera to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Maria Flor Herrera received unanimous support, she is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Henry J. Titanu to serve as Administrator of the Guam Economic
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Wait. This.
Senator Duñez.
Who's here?
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator San Nicholas.
Yes.
Senator San Nicholas, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, can you please excuse Senator Uggan?
Thank you, I moved Senator Uggan to be excused from the remainder of session.
Thank you very much on that, without any objections ordered. On the appointment of Henry J. Titanu to serve as Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority, the nominee received 11 ye votes, three nays and one excused absence. Henry J. Titanu is duly confirmed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor in vetoed Bill Number 9-32, I'd like to ask the clerk to take roll call. Not, that comes at the end, because the way they were placed on the bill comes afterwards. If you look at your agenda, you would see that it's after, it's on Page 11. Yes, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, excused. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Nay.
Senator Lim Tiako, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator San Nicholas.
Yes.
Senator San Nicholas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor in vetoed Bill Number 9-32, the votes are seven yays, seven nays and one excused absence. A vetoed Bill Number 9-32 failed to get the required vote to be overridden. Notwithstanding the Governor's objections to vetoed Bill Number 64-32, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, excused. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Nay.
No.
Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready.
No.
Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, nay. Senator Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, Senator.
Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator San Nicholas.
Yes.
Senator San Nicholas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
No.
Notwithstanding the Governor's objections in vetoed Bill Number 64-32, the votes are six ye votes, eight nays, one excused absence. Vetoed Bill Number 64-32 failed to get the required votes to be overridden. On the appointment. On the nomination of John Z. Arroyo to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. You guys know who we're talking about, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Okay. Mr. John Arroyo received, what was the number again? You got it?
No.
10? Is it 10? 11, 11 votes, so Mr. John Z. Arroyo is duly confirmed by this body. Senator, I was going to take a brief recess.
Madam Speaker, I move to adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion then, without any objections ordered.